I can bring the meeting to order and ask the role we call, please.
Boo.
Here.
Osman.
Here.
Dishron.
Here.
Posthauser.
Here.
Carr.
Here.
B. Bowden.
Here.
If we all please stand for the pitch. I want to reach into the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a vision of justice for all. Alright, thank you all again for being here. We'll go ahead and move into the public participation portion of the meeting and Dr. Parker will begin with the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our March meeting. As you know, we start each meeting with our safety minute. First aid to make sure we have volunteers to call 911, first aid responders, and also volunteers who are certified in CPR. If you could raise your hand, please. Thank you very much. Our exits are off to our right and to my left, and the AED machine is in the main hallway. I'll begin by letting everyone know our current enrollment is 4,485 students, which is actually a decrease of six students since our last meeting in February. Registration for next year will start on March 29th for all of our current students, and we're anxious to see what our early enrollment numbers are going to be following registration. Our online registration has gone very, very well for kindergarten, and although we didn't pre-register as many students as we currently have enrolled, we actually enrolled 20 more students than what we pre-registered a year ago for this school year. So, early indications seem to show that we're going to be close to what we had thought. The deadline to register for state of the schools was actually today, and we have around 250 people planning to attend. It'll certainly be at capacity, and we're excited to share all the good things happening that our staff and our students have done here in the Dunlap School District. During our committee of the whole meeting, we discussed our climate survey results for those that weren't here, and we're very pleased that our scores were very positive, with some areas of improvement noted in the area of social-emotional learning, which fits in nicely with our recommendation tonight for an alternative program at Dunlap High School for next year, which is actually on tonight's agenda. And we have a lot going on in our high school, especially in the next, on Friday, so I want to wish our Scholastic Bull best of luck as they head into state competition this weekend, as well as our Dunlap Eagles Special Olympians as they compete in the Special Olympic State Basketball Tournament at ISU on Friday. We also have our robotics team. They're competing Friday in the Central Illinois Regional at Bradley University, and when I was in Mr. Adrian's office today, we were like, "Well, you do this and I'll do that," and trying to make sure everything's covered. So, it's going to be a busy day in Dunlap on Friday. We also have a student, Rohan Potkar, from Hickory Grove, who will compete in the spelling bee this weekend, and we wish him luck as he has a chance to head to Washington DC to compete in the national spelling bee. And Friday is our last day for school for a well-deserved spring break for our students and our staff, and we also have Meet the Kid tonight for our Board of Education election tomorrow night at 6:30 at Dunlap Valley, and I would encourage everyone to attend. So, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Parker.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll now move into public participation. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board at this time? If so, please stand. Alright, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and conclude the public participation portion of the meeting, and the board will now move into information and discussion items. The first item board we have in your packet is the school activity account reports that were available for review. Were there any questions or comments regarding those activity reports? Alright, the second thing we have is information regarding the high school random drug testing report for the month of January. That was available in your packet. And Mr. Adrian, is he representing the high school? If you have any questions regarding the random drug testing? Alright, well now we have the exciting part, right? We have a presentation about the high school, so Mr. Adrian.
We are excited to be here tonight. We've heard everybody else say all the exciting things they're doing, so we couldn't wait for our opportunity to share a little bit with you about Dunlap High School. And before I begin, I want to introduce my instructional leadership team. We have Lawrence Scram, I've got Adam Collins, I've got Annie Snyder, Matt Andrews, Jody Hale, Katie Cazale, and Mary Ann Henry. So, if you haven't had an opportunity to know these people, if you don't, I would encourage you to do so because there are a wealth of knowledge in their individual fields. I'm also thankful to have great assistant principals, Chris Mason and Marcus Beal. So, we've been busy. Like Dr. Parker mentioned, we're going to be really busy this weekend. It's really exciting, though, honestly. I mean, with all the things going on, all of our kids, of all the different things, a good portion of our building is going to be actively participating in an extended competition, so exciting times. And like you mentioned, the spring break starts just Friday, but apparently at the high school, it starts on Thursday, so we have a lot of absences for Friday. We dealt, well, Gail Boler has been dealing all week with absences for Friday, so it's going to be a little bit chaotic here. If you have time, I encourage you, though, we're doing this send-off for our best buddy and our Special Olympians on Friday between 10 and 10:30. We're going to send them to the gym for them, and we're going to have some clubs help us send them off and wish them luck. So, they participate at 2:30 Friday for the first-day game, and then at ISU's Orton Fieldhouse, and then Saturday morning at 9:30 for sure. So, a lot going on, but we're going to try to, somebody's going to get all of this stuff. So, without further ado, let me tell you a little bit about Dunlap High School and our students. First of all, DHS students are challenged. Every day in the classroom, we challenge them with a rigorous curriculum. They're collaborative. We focus on project-based, and I have noticed that throughout the district in my own son's experience at the Valley. A lot of things, a lot of collaborative work being done. So, we do the same thing at the high school. We'll try to take it to the next level. Our students are creative. These are all drawings. This is a, obviously, an airplane model that we had the pleasure to learn to manipulate. We try to tell people that is actual drawings, not a photograph. So, our orchestra, obviously, another drawing. Our musical, which had over 90 students involved in it in some way, shape, or form. And then this is our steamworks. It's our project for our robotics initiative that we've got going for our competition. Everyone in the country, or sorry, the world, that competes in the robotics competition, it involves steam power. So, that was the logo for this year. So, our students have been busy putting in numerous hours, more so than they have on their actual studies for the robotics projects. I can tell them that, but they've been doing a great job with that. So, our students, more importantly, they're ready, and that's our FBLA students that involve in our Future Business Leaders of America. They're ready to go. They're ready to take on the next challenges in their life. What does the data look like at DHS? Well, the SAT is a classic aptitude test for all of our juniors. We know that's new this year. Replacing the ACT is our standardized test. We have our STAR data, which is our district's math and reading assessment. We give that to all ninth, 10th, and 11th graders. We have our ISA, our LS science assessment. As you remember, this is part of the PAR initiative, and this is all repeated at the high school level, and it tests all of our biology students, whether they're enrolled in regular biology or honors biology, and it could be freshmen mostly, and even a couple of juniors involved. And then we have our officer AP, our Advanced Placement, which is optional for our students. I'll get back to that a little bit. It's optional for our students, but I'm very pleased to report that 85% of our students enrolled in AP classes, take the exam, which is extremely high. So, that says, one, they're confident, two, they're confident that their teachers prepared them. So, that's a very high number. SAT practice data at DHS, we told you we were going to focus on this. We did. We had a parent meeting in, I think it was October, wasn't it, Kim? You're in the next row. Kim's our department chair for the captain. I believe so. We informed them what it looked like, how it would be a little bit different. And then we challenged specifically Mr. Andrews and Mrs. Russell, who's our math chair, is not here right now, to develop a curriculum for that. But if you look, this is our practice ACT that we gave in October at 1060, okay, which, you look at the LMO average for the actual SAT, it's just above 1,000, and globally, it's 1020. So, just for a practice exam, where they have behind in prep and not really, they're not really that focused on, they know it doesn't really count, our students still score well above the average. So, excited about that. What our prep looks like, we started out small this year with what we had to develop the curriculum for, but we believe that depending upon how this goes, it may evolve a little bit over the next year, next couple of years, to maybe a little bit more extensive. But right now, it's four weeks. Students go three times a week, and they're 24-minute sessions. Like I said, in October, all juniors took the practice SAT. These results were used to place students in appropriate prep courses, okay? So, they're based upon ability, so the students can go at the same pace, and they can learn the material that they need to learn without being over their head. Students were given the option to opt out of the section if they received a score of 650 or higher on that area than the practice SAT. 650 is what it would take to score the 95th percentile nationally. So, that's a pretty high standard. We did have quite a few students opt out of it. Yes?
When do they do this?
In October.
I mean, what part of the day?
In the homeroom.
Homeroom, okay.
Oh, you mean the program.
Yeah.
Yeah. And again, I would like to say thank you, Captain Russell and Matt Andrews, for developing our prep curriculum for SAT this year. They did a nice job with that. As you know, the foundation of our ACT has been replaced by the SAT. This is what the numbers look like last year, if you forgot. Still considerably above the state average. Very proud of that number. We expect our SAT to be very similar to that. Our data, what does it look at the high, look like at the high school? Again, this is what we use to prepare our students through national norms. It's a national standardized test. It's given three times a year to all ninth, 10th, and 11th graders. Used as our universal screener for response intervention, our RTI. So, we use this to help place students to get the help they need. If you look, the SGP stands for Student Growth Percentage Rate, okay? And to score excellent in there, your student's average needs to be 66 or higher percentile points, okay? So, if you look at that, math, ours was 68%. Now, that's really interesting because that's obviously excellent. That's also the highest STAR score in the district. What makes that really unique is at the high school, you can imagine a high school student go through all the tests that they've gone through, get to high school, they're tired of it. The apathy is really high. So, for them to score really well on that, that says a lot about how our teachers have prepared them and how important they think it is. So, very, very impressed with that, very pleased with that number. And again, reading comes in at 60, at the 60th percentile. So, our students' average scoring in the 60th percentile for that. Again, that's, yes?
Isn't our, isn't our math usually lower than our reading?
Yes, but the high school did a phenomenal job in taking their data.
Reading, reading has been always low.
Oh, low? Oh, I thought, I thought it was.
Reading, reading.
Math, like, I thought we were with the national, in line with national where the math is lower, but is that a different star? Is that PAR or something?
PAR data or STAR data?
I was saying, maybe that's the PAR data I'm thinking of.
Some of the math PAR data was lower, but in STAR.
STAR. Okay, okay.
Any questions on this? Any other questions on STAR? Okay, thanks. AP test. Okay, you can see that we've been very good. Those students scoring three or higher. So, in the state of Illinois, if you scored a three on the AP test, you get credit for it in some way, shape, or form in the state of Illinois. If you get a four or five, you're almost guaranteed credit anywhere, okay? So, 82% of our students scored a three or better. Again, a phenomenal, phenomenal score, particularly when you compare it to what the state average is and then globally. Our students are very well-prepared in those courses. And speaking of AP, I think we've got 276 students taking 478 AP exams this spring. So, for the people that administer those exams, thank you so much. It is a long, a long process. It is. Alright, Canvas. As you know, Canvas is one of our initiatives and what it looks like at the high school, where we're at. I'm really pleased with where our staff is at for Canvas. So, right now, as of March, this was put together the first of March, we had 25% of our faculty could teach one class wholly on Canvas, which is excellent. We have another 57% approaching readiness. Well, what that means is they're probably good at some parts of Canvas, but not this other part. They're not just really comfortable rolling it out there for everybody to see, okay? They're not confident in it yet. And then we have 18% that's developing the skills. That's the 18% that we're really focusing on the remainder of the year in our SIP and in our PLC. We're going to focus on getting those people up to PAR. And I think Heather Bunn is going to talk a little bit about professional development plan later on. They include some summer tutorial work on Canvas. So, but as a building, very pleased with where we're at on Canvas. And then full implementation. In every class we had was on Canvas. Every teacher was on Canvas. Again, we have 17%. So, those same teachers, a good portion of the same teachers have one class or have multiple classes on there, what that's telling us. And then we've got 43% approaching readiness that, mm, I feel I just need to shore up a few things. And then we, obviously, we have a lot more that are reluctant to go all out. But the good news is, you know, we have 15 months to get to that point. And the more people we have that are fluent in it, the more trainers we have that can help their peers. So, I feel really good going forward with it. I feel really good with where we're at, but I think we've got the time to make this happen right, so.
Can you give me a quick overview on Canvas?
A quick overview on Canvas? Well, it's a learning management platform, okay? We're, if you're familiar with Google Classroom, or Edmodo, or anything like that, students can go there. They can get, they can take quizzes. They can have their homework assignments. They can also, it relates to our grade book in Power School, so grades can be imported and exported into Power School quickly. It's a really powerful tool. It's kind of scary because it's not really easy to learn right away, but I think that the power that it has and the flexibility that it has is going to allow us to do a lot more things efficiently. So, students log onto there, and they can post their quizzes and homework and so forth. So, it's a powerful tool. Once we get really good at it, I'm sure next year, one of the schools will have somebody come present on what it looks like in their classroom.
And isn't that something that students are pretty comfortable with by now?
Some of them are. I'll use my son's example. It's this grade. He's very comfortable with it. Now, my high school senior, who's got three platforms to learn on right now, he's on Canvas, he's got, I think maybe Schoolology, he's got Google Classroom. He's going different places to find it. That's why it's essential that we have one place where all of our students can be fluent with and comfortable with. So, yeah, they have their kids, though. They got it figured out. So, very neat, though. But as a staff, you can feel good about where the high school's at with that. Significant changes at DHS. We have an improved graduation reporting rate. I'll explain that a little bit on the next slide. Increased library usage. Thankfully, you guys have allowed us to add AP World History. Addition and cooperative learning courses, again, other big plus for the high school. Addition and fiber clubs, and hopefully tonight, while the alternative education and the pilot for our summer school program is added, those can really make a significant difference, not only for the students that are directly involved in that, but all of the students in the building. They all work together. So, you know, if you focus on that, sure, that's going to help those kids immediately involve those programs, but it's also a change in the environment of our building, too, for the benefit. So, it's a little plug going forward with that. Okay, improved graduation reporting rate. When you go for any job.
Okay, but the improved graduation rate?
Yeah.
Didn't you mention one time that we weren't reporting something right, and that affected our report card?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I'm going to show you that right now. Okay, so when you go for any job, the first thing you do is you research the company, okay, just like I did at Dunlap High School. And the way you do that for a school is you go to what's called the IIRC, or the Illinois Internet Report Card, and you can pull up all the data. And the first thing that jumped out at me was our graduation report, our graduation rate, because at that time in July, it was showing a graduation rate of 86.8% at Dunlap High School. So, then I looked back, and I thought, "That's strange. It was 90, 89, 90, and it's up to 95." So, I was prepared to answer that question if I was asked. It didn't get asked. They talked about similar, I would not exactly ask. When we got here, I was going to explore that. I figured it had to be something with reporting, because at Dunlap High School, we don't have a 14% drop off rate. We just don't. So, after talking with the counselors, talking with the teachers, talking with the admin, I was convinced that it was reporting in the way we upload that. So, I worked with Diana Faust, and what we found is, for ISBR, I'm a state Board of Education, students come in as a cohort, a four-year cohort. So, when they come in, they're together. And when they register again for art classes in the spring to go to Dunlap, okay, they're part of that cohort. But when they were moving out and leaving the district, we were not exiting them out properly out of that cohort of students. So, that cohort would go on and go on and go on, and in year four, those same kids that came in, well, guess what? 14% of them had moved on somewhere else. And they were not graduating with that class, so it reflected negatively on Dunlap High School. So, again, thankful for Diana Faust and her perseverance and patience. She worked back and forth with different people, and Heather did as well. We're like, "We really want that change this year. We want that change on that report card this year." And it was about a two- or three-week battle of just constant going, "We'll call you back. We'll call you back. We'll get a change." And we checked every day, and it wasn't changed, until finally it was changed to where it should be at 95%. That's significant, because when you go for all the different types of awards, obviously, that's one of the characteristics or traits, the key components that they look at. So, but that was a big thing for us. The DHS library continues to evolve under Mr. Stefanski's leadership. This year, we hosted over 275 classes, added over 450 new books. 6,500 students have independently, on occasion, used the library, okay? So, that's significant. That means they're comfortable coming in there. They're comfortable talking to the staff, and typically, they're coming in there for a purpose. So, that's a big number, and I'm glad that she's able to track all that. The DHS Book Club has raised over $2,000 from the library, and we've increased the special events to improve awareness for Monthly Maker Fair, Literacy Showcase, and then Monthly Newsletter, all in an effort to increase the library usage. So, that's why we're really excited about the renovation plan we have for the library over two years. I think that's going to add a whole different flavor to the building, because the atmosphere is just different. They're not in there to check out a book. They're in there to find resources, talk to people that are knowledgeable about resources, get their work done. It's just a nice place to be. How do our athletes perform at DHS? Recently, it's been, it's been awesome. You've read, you've read the Facebook page. You've probably seen our Twitter. But just recently, our state boys' swimming team advanced in the sectional. And we don't have some last bowl in there, because it's obviously not an athletic event, but they just advanced as well. But football qualified for the state 5A playoffs. Girls Cross Country was runner-up. Again, that's extremely strong, state-renowned program. Volleyball was regional champ. Soccer was the regional champ. Girls' swimming and boys' swimming were sectional champs, advanced the state. And our Special Olympic basketball team, again, has advanced the state this weekend. After the fall season, the Eagles led the overall sports trophy in the Midline Conference with 4,500 points, which is a combination of all the activities. So, they were the best ones in the fall. And then our participation numbers, no worries there with any of those. Those are all strong numbers. None of them really leap out to you. Obviously, football's a lot, but I think they're all strong numbers. And our clubs, clubs that participated, that number, 1,020, it's a little deceiving, because there are kids who are involved in the one-on-one club. But for the most part, you come in on a club day, which is a Friday, every other Friday, we have, that number's actually close, because those students who aren't involved in club go to one of the gyms. So, in the, in our junior gym, we have our freshman south force, and then our main gym, we have our juniors and seniors, and there's roughly 100 each. So, that number is probably pretty close. So, very pleased with that. But to back that real quick, good.
Two questions. One, you didn't have some of the sports listed because we haven't had them yet, is that why?
Right, right.
And secondly, I was wondering, do you have the trend, are we staying at the same high participation rate for the extracurriculars and sports, or do you know?
You know, I haven't seen the actual participation number. I would guess, I mean, I guess around 60 to 75%. I'm sure it's probably pretty steady.
Okay.
But the club numbers is where I'm really trying to focus on. It's part of our, we don't have our official school climate goal finalized yet, but it's about 90% formulated. But we're working on doing something with the clubs to enhance the social-emotional need of our students. I think that's where maybe our mission is to get a little online growth. How are our performing arts fair? I mean, you're aware of the band. I mean, you know what they did this fall. Oops. They were second place at Washington for auxiliary racing, boys were also second place at Normal West. The Metamora Band Invitational was earlier. We were first versus percussion. SIU Music and Motion, I'm not sure we're going back there. I'm not sure we experienced what they wanted it to be for as long as they traveled. Was second place in Eppingham. I mean, it's very strong. When you travel around the state, they ask about our band. They do. They know how strong it is and how well-respected Mr. Shea and Miss Potts are. The choir, 23 students were selected for the ILMIA District Festival for chorus. Sticks were named all-state. Libby Lewis won, and she won the National Anthem, she's taking the girls' state tournament. I didn't have an opportunity to go see her sing, but my phone was beeping off the hook, and I had some friends that were like, "Hey, that girl, that sing was great." So, and I guess she was a lot better even in the evening than she was in the afternoon. So, very proud of her. She's very active. And then also, we had our 15th Annual Medal Performance. We had three sold-out crowds, so they did a tremendous job also. And then dance advanced to the ITC 35. So, performing arts, again, really strong with that. And like I said before, Big Fish, we had almost 90 participants involved in that, in the musical. So, a lot going on. I want to show you a little video that I want to explain a little bit about. It's a lot of our video footage, but it's also part of the Game Ball footage. And why that's significant, I mentioned, because 2010 alumni, Pat Clark, worked with Game Ball to put their promotional video together, did a fabulous job. We don't have rights to distribute it, but he gave Mr. Stefanski rights to show it tonight at our board meeting. So, once they release this Game Ball, then we'll be allowed to re-release our video to everybody. So, that's why I'm not going to post it anywhere until that's passed. But what it does, why I like this piece of video, not only is it high-quality, but it shows how involved our school is in the community. So, you'll get a full bit of flavor for it, so. Any questions before I go on with the video? So, on that second evening, we revealed over $5,000 in net per fee. So, the foundation's still very happy about that. I mean, again, it's a show that, I guess, an activity we're involved in the community, so I'll continue with it. Any questions on that at all? Well, thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Very nice. Thank you.
Very nice.
Okay, boy, we're now gonna move into our next information item for this evening. It is about the Dunlap Middle School yearbook contract, that's available in your packet. And Mrs. Beverlin has any answers to any questions you may have regarding the yearbook? Was there anything anybody had? Okay, and, uh, Karen, is that, is that for both schools?
And it's just for the middle school.
Okay.
Um, these contracts used to be just done in the school, they didn't come to the norm. So, the middle schools is the only one that's up for next year right now, so the rest of them will count for school pictures in the yearbooks as they come to the next couple of years.
Oh, very good, thank you. All right. The next item we had was an out-of-state trip to Washington DC in Philadelphia for the eighth-grade students. Information regarding that trip was available in your packet. Uh, is Mr. Chatterton here? There he is, yep, Mr. Chatterton's here, and he has, he can answer any questions you may have regarding the trip. How many students do you have going?
I know that I was supposed to come up to the microphone to answer the questions. I, I just looked, it looks like we have, uh, a hundred, approximately 130 students going this year.
And that, that's for both middle schools?
That's for both, yes. Um, traditionally, we've always had fewer students at Dunlap Middle, uh, ten, and that number continues to grow and get closer to matching.
How close are we?
Uh, I think we're, I, I would roughly say around, I guess maybe we would have 140 kids going, because I think they have about ninety, and we have about fifty.
Do you remember how many you had the first year? I just remember the growing.
I think that we had, I want to say, uh, twenty-two sticks out for us. I don't remember about the valley, but...
That's good, so, you've doubled.
But the, uh, yeah, but the numbers have shifted a little bit with enrollment numbers and such.
Very good, thank you very much. Any other questions, I'm sorry? Anybody else? Okay, very good. All right, okay, Mrs. Bowman's gonna present information regarding the DHS summer courses proposal, and we have that in our packet as well.
Yes. Um, we have put together, it's a, oh, I'm gonna be doing the wrong stuff here, so, hang on one second, a brief presentation. Um, this summer, we would really like to be able to offer, just starting small, but two different, uh, courses for summer school for our high school students. And the reasoning behind this, it's still, let's go back to the beginning, sorry. Let's go backwards. Here we go. Um, the reasoning behind this is really, we want to be able to offer some other opportunities to our students, it could open up some of their schedules, um, and allow us to really help meet our mission of empowering individual potential. So, what we're looking at for this current summer is to be able to offer two courses in two different sessions, so civics and software apps are the two courses we're looking at offering. Um, and we had looked at a couple different options, but in talking with the counselors, really wanted to be able to offer software apps, obviously, every student needs to take, but that's at generally the freshman or the sophomore level that they take that course. So then, we took a look at civics, because that one is generally more at the junior or senior level, um, those students would have transportation, and oftentimes, especially in social studies, because we only have, uh, the two-year requirements, but then, as students get older and they're looking at those different college courses and realize they may need additional social studies, um, that's another option there too, but civics is a requirement as well. Um, so, offering each session once, or twice, excuse me, two sessions, but each course once. So civics and software apps in June, and then both again in July, it would be five days a week for four hours from eight until noon, or four hours, excuse me, five, the five hours is what we're budgeting in for the staff. Um, so really, the cost is, we would need one teacher for each course, and we would post those positions, if, you know, you only have one person interested, then they could do both sessions, that would be great, but if you have different people, you could have one teacher do one June session, a different teacher do the July session. Um, they would be paid at the contractual rate of $30 per hour. Um, so those teachers would be paid for a total of seventy-five hours of time. Like I said, we did five hours a day, even though the students are only in session for four, because they need time for prep work and to be able to grade and assess the different assignments that would come in. So you're really looking at a total cost for each of these four classes of $9,000 total. Because, though, this would be a summer course, and this isn't something typical, we would charge students, and we'd be able to charge us $90 per student for the entire course, um, as long as we had twenty-five students enrolled, that would cover all of our costs. Um, we would cap it at thirty students, we wouldn't go over that, and if a student qualified for free and reduced lunch, they would only pay the reduced rate of $45. Um, attendance would be pretty strict, because it is a lot of material in a condensed period of time. So you've really got to make sure that the students are there and that they're gathering that information. And that really is part of the reason why we looked at two different windows of time as well, because, you know, people have trips planned or different things going on, so you want to make sure that you're offering some choice there. Um, but if you had, you know, three tardies, and that would then count as a half-day absence, you're late more than ten minutes, it counts as a half-day absence, and you're allowed one full absence. So like I said, it's, it's pretty strict, um, and if you were, you'd be removed from the course if you had more than that one absence.
And I'm assuming you would include, I mean, medical would be okay if you got sick, you had to go to the doctor?
After your one absence.
Really? Would you be refunded? What if you got, like, strep throat, and you're required to be absent?
You can't, you have to be in class so often, so many hours to make it count.
Understand, but you can't help...
Right, you can't help that, absolutely, but it's really gotta be, it's, we have to meet the requirements of the state for them to be able to have that credit, so it does have to be pretty stringent.
Is there, is there opportunity, um, if a child was sick, to register in the next section?
Yeah.
So they could complete the course?
Right, based on availability, we could definitely do that.
Okay.
We're anticipating that it'll be well-received, but again, we're starting small this first year, because we just don't know. It's not something we've done before, there are other local schools that do do this, and they have a pretty strong turnout, so I would anticipate that that would be the case for us as well, but we'll just...
So you could potentially have makeup days, only for the first session? I mean, you can.
You know, we could potentially, if they missed the first session, yeah, if there's room in the second session, you could have a makeup day possibly, and we'll be flexible, but we have to really stick to those guidelines, because we're pushing it to get the minimum number of hours in there anyway, for the class. You know, one day is like four days of missing class, so, we gotta be really cautious with that. You know, look at, though, you know, Heather and I are excited about it for two reasons. The, not only potential for remedial work in the future, but this allows, let's say your high school's doing Bethry, you can get that civics knocked out in the summer, now you can take the extra foreign language, the extra art, or the extra science.
Oh, yeah, I'm just, I'm totally for this, I just get worried.
Yeah, I mean, if this was a year-long campus, and kids, it would be, you know, this is first step.
Heather, are those attendance requirements similar to other schools at the middle school?
Yes, yes, it's comparable to what other schools have.
And legally, we can charge, because, you know, really, we're supposed to provide...
We can, because it's outside of the normal 180, yes.
And what if we don't get twenty-five a class? At what point do we not offer it?
I think if we had less than twenty students, we would not offer it, so I would say we'd have to get at least twenty students. It would be a minimal cost to us then.
Okay. And so, with the $90, if you have, um, twenty-five students, that equals, oh, yeah.
Yep, that covers.
Okay. Yep.
So, yeah, it's not really costing us anything.
Right. Right, it's just a service then that we're able to provide. So really, timeline on this, we're looking at, you know, we're giving this proposal here, we've got a special board meeting set up for April 3rd, which is when we would be voting on this. So then if it was approved immediately that week, we would send out a Power School Messenger to those students with information on how to register. It would have to be first-come, first-served for this first year, because we don't have tons of seats available, you know, really, you're looking at sixty seats per session, it's not large. Um, but we've got to start somewhere. Um, and then we would have job postings right away that next day to gauge interest. Of course, we would post internally first, we would love to have some of our teachers who would be willing to do this, but if for some reason we couldn't, then we could tap into other outside community resources, other teachers in the area. Um, and then students would be notified of their session and courses, except if I may first. I see this as, you know, as we're having them sign up, you're gonna put down what your preference is, can you only do June, can you only do July, or could you do both? So they could, you know, have some flexibility there in where we could fit kids in. Um, and then a payment would be due by May 20th in order to secure their placement. If at that time they hadn't submitted their payment, then we could go, if there was a waiting list, we could go down to anybody on that waiting list.
Just out of curiosity, what other districts are doing this? You mentioned that there were a few.
My previous district did it, and then Mohammed Seymour does this format, so, and, and the thing that's intriguing about our district is, I think, once this catches on, it's gonna be a year-round campus for kids coming and going.
I, I agree.
I really do. I think our, our, the demographic of our students wanting to keep going and, and keep opening up doors in the fall and spring, like, you know, just the limited number of scheduled contests I've dealt with, it's because they want to get nine hours jumped into seven hours, you know? And if they could just get some of the requirements knocked out, there, it's gonna open up a lot more flexibility for those students.
Washington High School in the area, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't see my checkbooks in my purse, so...
Yeah, I don't operate now, yeah. Washington High School in the area, Peekin High School, I believe, does some summer coursework, um, those are two off the top of my head that I know.
Does this provide any security or safety issues, different from what you're doing now? Is it gonna be pretty much the same?
Our buildings are open throughout the summer, so, and there's always an administrator here in the summer, or a counselor, they're on a rotating basis.
I think there's somewhere 24 hours a day, a day of the year, every time I go to my house, but that would, that would...
Something specific you're concerned about?
No, I just didn't know, I mean, obviously, it's different, right, during, now, the buzzer and how people are coming in, I don't know, who's in the building at the time?
But all of our contractors, anybody that comes in has to be background checked, so that really wouldn't provide any other security issues there. They all have to go through that same process for the ROE.
Question about the notification, Power School Messenger, does that mean it's an email, or does it only come through your Power School?
I believe they get it as an email.
Yeah, email.
Great.
Uh, and then ideally, as we've already said, we'd love to be able to expand this, you know, based off of the first year, see how it goes. Ideally, other districts offer PE, that's something it can do in the summer, which then frees up time, um, you know, because you only have to have your, your eight semesters there. Algebra II is a big one that we see students want to take over the summer, so that would be a course that we would definitely want to offer, some sort of a language arts course, and, um, like Mr. Adrian said, remedial offerings, so different ways, if a student, you know, doesn't pass a class, could we get them to take it in the summer, so that then they're caught up and ready to go for that next year and staying on track for graduation?
We get out in front of it, we can survey the students to see what offerings they would like. PE will look a little different, it'll cost a little bit more, because PE will be like, this week, we're gonna go to the golf, we're gonna golf all week, this week, we're gonna go to bowling and bowl all week, this week, we're gonna canoe or whatever it is, it's gonna be different week-long activities, so it'll look entirely, because you gotta think, they got four hours now, so they can do some real activities that they may not have been experienced to in the regular, uh, classroom, so. And then the other avenue I'm excited about, this could also lead into a blended course, where we've got a lab with thirty kids, they're all doing something different, and there's one supervisor going around and giving them help. So, it could really be...
Are there any high schools doing online remedial at all yet with something like this?
Summer, yeah.
With summer?
Yeah.
What they'll do is they'll hire a science teacher, and they'll offer four or five science classes.
Online?
And they'll go from online, do those, typically remedial, but, you know...
See a lot of it up in the Chicago suburbs.
Is that something down the road you may look at here, too?
Definitely.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about the remedial we have for the at-risk program, the credit recovery, is that what you're looking at in the remedial, or are you saying actually offer, uh, a teacher teaching it, or would it be more like the...
Well, the alternative education, if you don't mind, will be online with a program called Edgenuity, and there'll be an aide there the first year, helping them through, navigate all that.
Right, so for the summer program, is that what you're looking at, or...
You know, it could be, it could possibly be, because the way you buy those licenses, if you buy fifteen licenses, you can have fifteen different kids in the morning, fifteen different kids in the afternoon, you know, you could move those around, so it's got some fluidity to it.
That one would depend on how the first year of the alternative will go, if approved tonight, and then we would have to, you know, gauge that offer there and see where we're at.
And I do think Algebra II would be important, there's a lot of those kids who want to go to Illinois Mountain Science School, and what they're doing is doubling up, right, in the freshman year?
Yes.
Get that underway, so...
Yes. So that's definitely down the road, something we'd like to look at. Other questions you guys have about this?
Good work, I like it.
Are the current teachers that teach civics and software apps, do, are they, uh, interested in this summer type thing?
We haven't, I asked our teachers, I'm pretty confident we can get someone, if we post externally, but we'll obviously give our teachers that opportunity first.
We also have teachers throughout the district that even if they don't currently teach these courses at the high school, are certified or licensed to teach it, so, there could be other opportunities for other in-district people who maybe have taught it in the past and have switched into a different role.
I think one of our teachers who doesn't teach social science now thought, it's a lot of social, if I teach that, I'd miss it, so...
Oh, absolutely.
And you would think that'd be fairly easy, I mean, if there's a chance for you to make some money for just two weeks, I would do it. You already have your lessons learned, everything's already...
And if you notice, students are session for four hours, but the teacher's getting paid for five, so they have the hour of prep.
Yeah.
Because it is a long day, they have to...
Very good. I think it's excellent. My daughter, I think, had to do civics online, I spent some years ago, I can't quite remember, but, uh, it was an exception to do it online, and if something like this were available, that would have been great, so, good job.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item we have is information regarding the future agenda items for the board's review, there's always a form in there, if the, any of the board members wants to bring something forward to be put on the agenda, Doug Park, do you have anything?
I do not have anything.
Okay, so we don't have anything with that for this evening. Okay, and that concludes the information discussion item segment of the meeting, and we'll now move into the...
We back up, I could bring it later, but I'm wondering about a policy that, just so we can put it to rest, um, was it policy?
Is it something we're discussing tonight?
No, it is not. It is something that we had discussed, and it was supposed to come back, but didn't.
Okay, did you fill out a form for the future agenda?
Well, it's a policy that was actually in work, so I didn't think I needed to, because apparently, I think, last I heard that it says that you were supposed to meet with the DEA to discuss the, what is this?
Are you using the social media poll?
Yes!
Okay, yeah, that meeting is scheduled.
Oh, it is? Okay, perfect, well, then, let's put this away.
Okay, thank you. Um, we'll move into the consent agenda items, and I'll ask if there are any clarifications or discussion items regarding the consent agenda?
If there are no... Oh, Beth, I do have a question. Beth had a question about, um, the policy items not being brought for an information item beforehand, and so, are these are just technical, and that's why we're not...
Yeah, those are the two we had already discussed previously, so I didn't think I needed to bring them again. And then the other one was, I'll pull it up here, I think we changed from four years to eight semesters, so I thought that was...
That was just a cleanup, right?
Yeah. I didn't think we needed to bring it twice.
And then, though, that policy 7190, when I talked to press, they, they had, that has never been changed, so I'm not sure how we, how it got changed, um, in our policy.
It was not listed, I looked the press up again today, it was not listed in there that they sent us the last time.
Well, I have it right here, and I spoke to them today, and the laser pointers have always been in there, it was on item five above it, what they added is cellular phones.
Um, I'll look again, I mean, we'll just revise it, yeah.
Okay, well, there, and the agenda items, consent agenda is there for you, they have the summer projects, the out-of-state robotics, you know, student handbooks, presence learning contracts, and other service agreements. Was there any other questions or clarifications for the consent agenda? Okay, I'll, I'll now ask for motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda as presented for the March 15, 2017 Board of Education meeting.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl, and thank you, Paul. Any discussion? Go for it, go please.
Lou?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Dishroom?
Aye.
Post-Hallser?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zawin?
Aye.
All right, motion carried, thank you. I know, state that we'll move into the board, uh, action item segment of the meeting, and the first action item we have is the Bill List and Treasuries Report, and those were included in your packet for review, and Mrs. Beverlin's here to answer any questions that you may have. Anything you wanted to point out to us?
The only thing I want to say is, um, as far as expenses, they are tracking as they should be. The, um, state, the state of Illinois has yet to pay any categorical funds for this year, so they, at this point, they owe us about 1.1 million dollars, which primarily funds special ed and transportation, with a smaller portion coming for, um, English language learners. So I just wanted to let you know that. Rumor is that they're gonna release the first quarter's money, um, at the end of March, so at that point, they'll only be six months behind instead of nine, so we'll see if that happens, but...
So if at the end of the year, they're still behind, at the end of our fiscal year, what do we do? Do we take money from reserves, or...
If we end up that we're, if it ends up that we would be over budget, we would have to take money from reserves if the state doesn't pay it.
So they're always behind, but are they on a cycle? Like, can you predict ahead of time, and you know what's coming in?
Typically, yes, um, for the last five years, we've been getting three payments, but they were about three months behind. So right now, they're running six months behind, depending on if they pay at the end of March, will depend whether or not we end up nine months behind. So at this point, we're looking for maybe two payments of this year's money. And, um, they usually will pay one quarter of the previous year, the next year, um, we'll see how that goes, but really, what it's come down to for, like, the last five But really, what it's come down to for, like, the last five years, we've only gotten three payments. And they pretend like they're giving us four, but we only get three, so.
So we're losing 25%.
Yeah.
Would they? Okay.
Which I budgeted it that way, so I'm, I figure that we're not gonna get everything that we're supposed to give anyway, so.
So wait to see what happens at the end of March?
Wait to see what happens at the end of March. We'll keep our fingers crossed. The state has released it, but it hasn't been, the state has put in the vouchers for it to be paid, but it's not being released from the controller. So we're just in the line with all the other billions of dollars waiting to actually be paid, so.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other questions? All right, I'll ask for a motion to approve payment of the bills.
I move to approve payment of the bills in the amount of $3,392,375.38 as presented.
Second. All right, thank you, Brian. Thank you, Karen. Any discussion? Roll call, roll please. Bowlesman? Aye. Disharum?
Aye.
Halser?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zawin?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
All right. Motion carried. Thank you. The district investment report is available in your packet for review, and Mr. Nguyen is with us this evening. If you have any questions, Mr. Nguyen, would you like to inform us of anything?
I probably thought I should comment just on the Fed raising interest rates by a quarter point. The one, originally, I made a comment that anticipating two interest rate hikes, so it looks like we'll get three most likely this year. So how that affects the Dunlap is positive in the sense that, you know, as the Fed increases the short-term rates means, you know, the more we can invest at higher yields, which is good. And so that's a positive thing. The bonds that make up a large portion of the portfolio, the coupon steps up over time, so they're insulated a lot from rising rates, so that's a good thing, too. So as the Fed raises rates, these bonds will step up and, you know, the school will enjoy that as well. So in that sense, you know, the raising of rates overall for the district is, is good, and, and so that's, you know, that's the bottom line. Now, at some point, you know, they're, they're looking at when will this peak out. Right now, it's looking at a 3%, you know, say, in the end of, you know, 2018, 2019. Usually, though, the market will stumble before that and then may put a slower timeframe on the Fed. But if you think what the Fed is trying to do, it's trying to normalize rates at a higher level so that defensive assets and risky assets are more balanced, because rates were so low that everyone just piled into risky assets, like stocks. So as rates go up, you'll expect stock prices to kind of pull back a little bit or consolidate for some time, if that makes sense. But that's just general, just keeping it very broad. If there's any specific questions, be happy to answer any, but. So the next rate hike should probably happen in June, I would imagine, that timeframe, and then another one at the end of the year. The key is for the Fed just to keep it shallow and keep it according to what the market's projecting right now. If it deviates from that, that would be bad.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, the next item we have is the At-Risk program, and that's gonna be presented to the board in January. And Mr. Bond's available to offer any questions. Please brief. Maybe not January, for instance, Bond, but the program will be presented. But did anybody have any questions as in regards to the At-Risk program?
We had a great presentation last month.
And, yeah, and I think it's just, we look forward to seeing the benefits that the students will potentially get from just having the program here. So thank you for all your work that you've done leading up to this point and getting us to where we have something that will be put in place. Thank you. Anything else you wanted to share about the program briefly or?
Really, the only thing I have to share is that I've been talking with, well, we've been working, I think, as a team to, you know, see how this is gonna roll out. And Alyssa Hart, who did the presentation as well, is just bursting with ideas of how to provide more social-emotional support for students and really get involved in addressing the needs of the students that would be in that program and naming it something other than At-Risk. So that would be something that will be done in the future also, but I think the team, everybody that's worked on it, is really excited about moving it forward and then growing it from there.
So this, this is for the first year, though?
Mm-hmm.
And this is just credit recovery, right?
Correct.
Okay. So there's really no social-emotional component in the first year?
There absolutely can be.
Okay.
We've, with the addition of a full social worker, we've been able to restructure those responsibilities among three social workers, which provides more social work time at the high school just in general. And it just lends itself to, with that office being right there by the room that we hope to have the program, very close proximity to be able to, you know, meet the needs of those students right on hand when, when possible, so.
And what percentage of those students do you anticipate, or do you have any feel for, how many are going to have the social-emotional issues and how many are just needing the credit recovery? Because I know you said it was sort of a mix.
Mm-hmm. That's really hard to say, because I don't, I don't have the data on it. We're still looking at which, which students would be in there for the credit recovery. But with the fact that we can, with the Edgenuity licenses being concurrent and 15 kids can basically roll in and out for every period of the day, we can meet a lot of students. So I want to say half of those students, we could certainly meet the social-emotional needs, but everybody has social-emotional needs. So maybe even more than that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve the At-Risk program.
I move to approve the At-Risk program as presented.
A second.
Okay, thank you, Beth, and thank you, Teresa. Any discussion? Roll call, roll please. Disharum?
Aye.
Post-Halser?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zawin?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Bowlesman?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Thank you. All right, the next item we have is a middle school foreign language proposal, and that was included in your board packet, and Mrs. Bowman's gonna give us some information and answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so last month, when we brought the Explore proposal, the board had asked us to go back and take a look and see if there was any other way to take a look at adding any additional foreign language into our current system. And so I met with the foreign language teachers from the high school, and I met with the administrators from the middle school and talked about what we might possibly be able to do. So currently, in our Spanish 1 pre-AP, these are the numbers of what they look like with the two sections of Spanish at DMS and the one section at the Valley. So you have, you know, approximately 32% of your students at DMS who participate in Spanish, the rest participate in Explore. And at the Valley, it's about 23% participate in Spanish and the rest are in Explore. So in looking at all different options and what we could possibly do, we finally settled on looking at adding one section of French 1 pre-AP. While we did not want to pull additional students out of the Explore time, also wanted to create equity, or start to create equity, because it's still not equitable amongst the foreign language offerings with the Spanish 1 and the French 1. So with the numbers you would see here, it would be adding one section of French 1 pre-AP to our current Spanish offerings, so it's a total of four sections of foreign language that would be offered in lieu of Explore. And what that then does is that takes your percentages up a little bit with your numbers, and so you still have approximately 60% of students at Dunlap Middle participating in Explore and 66% at Dunlap Valley. Now, that's based on full enrollment sections of 30 of each, so that's where those numbers are coming from.
So before we move on from this slide, I'm looking at DMS, and so my reading, it says 8.1% of the students would be in French and a 32.3, which is compared to DVMS, an 11.3, it would seem that.
Because their numbers are smaller, and so percentage-wise, it comes out differently. I believe in these numbers. I just did 15 at 1, 15 at the other. And that's not to say that it would necessarily work out that way. It depends on where the GPAs fall and who would qualify, but that was the way that I figured these numbers for this.
So from the informational item to what we're just talking about right now, it hasn't changed? Or it has?
Has. It has. We're adding one more class of French.
Well, I'm just saying, shouldn't it come back as an information instead of an action item?
Well, here is why we brought it as an action item. Typically, yes, we would bring it as an information item, but we're getting pressed for time when it comes to enrolling students and making sure that we have everything with scheduling. The middle school principals are really starting to take a look at what those schedules are gonna look like, where those sections are gonna fall. We need to look at staffing, and so we really need to know whether or not this is something feasible that can be done or not. So that's why we were bringing it as an action item this month instead of an information item.
So financially, what has, is there any financial change from?
No, actually, what was approved last month, which, what we discussed for foreign language was in excess of what we would need for this. So we had had an addition of .875 for foreign language, and this would not be, this is one hour a day, so it's an addition of, at the middle school, schedule, oh, let me think.
Point.
Point.
It's about .1.
Point one.
.17.
Approximately. It's less. It's less than what we've budgeted for.
And is that because you have fewer Explore teachers' hours?
No, it's based off of what we were going to add originally for foreign language. It's down from that. So the original ask for foreign language is .875. This is not asking for .875.
You mean with the zero hour in the?
Correct.
Okay. And is there any way, why is there, are there fewer students at DVMS? Is there a way to equalize that, or is that based on grades? Or how do you come, why are those percentages different?
We've done one section traditionally at Dunlap Valley and two at Dunlap Middle based on enrollment, but those.
But I mean, is there a way to equalize it with the addition of a class that's split between two schools so that it's, it's equal?
It's never going to be 100% equal.
Okay.
How many students, like, because DMS has, how many students? And DVMS has 450.
I'm just talking about percentage, equal in percentage.
This is getting it closer. I mean, it's closer than it currently is if we're at this ratio, but it's never gonna match 100% because it, there's more than one factor. You can't, we could just say for qualification, if you wanted to strictly take the top some percentage at Dunlap Middle and the top some percentage at Dunlap Valley, but then the challenge you're gonna run into is you're not gonna have students with the same GPAs qualifying.
Right.
And so I think it makes more sense to try and align the GPAs. I mean, you would hate for somebody to say, well, my child attended Valley and had a 3.5 and got to be in Spanish, but at Dunlap Middle, you had to have a 3.9.
Right, right. Although it's different now, right?
We try and keep it pretty consistent.
Okay. And remind me, did we take care of the issue for the qualification for this, where the student is in honors? Are we gonna have?
We can't alter the GPAs, so at this point, no, we've kept the qualification the same with the addition of one course.
We were never asking you to alter the GPA. We were just saying within your checklist of what you use to define those students that maybe you would give them an extra point for taking an honors class, you know, because it would be the same as getting an A there or a B there and an A in a regular.
Right, but we would be weighting this scale then, and I thought about this.
Just for your, that would be.
Just for the qualification, not changing the grading scale.
Right, but that's already a distinction that they're able to take those accelerated courses and they qualify for that. I just have a hard time saying that we're gonna then give them an easier time to get into another advanced course when they're already qualifying for an advanced course.
But aren't they smarter to be in office because they're in those honors courses and are getting better grades? They're working for that. They, shouldn't they be rewarded for that?
I mean, on the other hand, they're being penalized, kind of, for taking the honors classes, because those are harder and they might not get the A.
But their, their threshold for success should be pretty high because they do qualify for those courses.
Right, it's just that you end up having an honors student who maybe got a B or two not getting into the foreign language when you have somebody who hasn't taken those higher challenging courses getting in.
Mm-hmm.
And so we just get, I mean, I think we get complaints, right? Every, every year?
I've never had a complaint.
Or even if it's even a four or a semester, you can get a B, you know, and go right back up. I just, you know, kids who are working hard, I think, should be rewarded, not punished. You know, those other kids, if they want to qualify, they need to work a little harder. I just don't, I think the rewards should go for the harder workers.
Do we see anybody in that group that's in the honors course that's less than a 3.5 GPA?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Anybody who's in these?
We can't take those 3.5s and above, I don't think, with this limited offering.
No, we wouldn't be able to. We're currently at about a 3.9 is what's currently, and we'd be offering one more section, so we'd be able to go down. We looked at the numbers, picturing the piece of paper right now, where we would be down, based off of current GPAs, where we're looking at, we'd be able to go down into the 3.8s. There might have been some down into the 3.75s.
We, we had a solution, right? We had a solution with your original proposal, 210.
Correct.
That, that solved your concern, but.
Correct.
We decided not to do it.
I know.
And then going with the two class here and the three class there, then you have to have some strict.
Right.
Criteria to select.
Yeah, that's why I thought maybe the qualification would change. We didn't have to change the qualification before because just more kids would be.
Yeah.
I didn't.
This is all we, even, this was just last month that we got asked to bring this back.
Yeah, I really, yeah.
Didn't have the chance to look at a big qualification process.
And the qualification process you had, you had discussed with your curriculum committee prior. Was there any concern with the curriculum?
When we were originally looking at adding so many more students, it really negated that, so we didn't see the need to reevaluate that at that time, so we didn't spend a lot of time with the committee on the qualification process because of that.
Right.
So just some different considerations. Obviously, the one section of French 1 pre-AP would be housed at the school with a larger population, with a 30-student max. In looking at scheduling, it would be offered first hour of the day, so then those students who were not at their home school would be transported over to, if it was housed at Dunlap Middle, then they'd be transported over to the Valley or vice versa, and get back to their home school to get on with the rest of the day. I talked with principals, they would look at, you know, scheduling that strategically, you know, trying to get that next course in there so that they're in there in as quick a time as possible. So if this were to be approved, then as soon as those seventh grade final GPAs were calculated at the end of the year, we would again notify those families through a Power School message. The top, we would have to start still with the top 90 students, because you're offering a choice between Spanish or French. You still have to start with those top 90 so that you know where they fall with their choices, and then go from there in preference given to the highest GPA. So then after those seats were filled, we would know what our other availability is and then move from there. Every once in a while, you get a student who doesn't want to participate in the foreign language. It's pretty few and far between, but you do get a few and they do have that option.